Good evening, thank you. My name is Andrew Hutchinson, I'm here with the Berford Development LLC, and I have my professional engineer, Robert Pining, here to answer any more technical questions. We're here to present the Kaufman Commons PRD. So, we have proposed a 20 lot, single-family community. We have 10.7 acres, which meets the requirements for the PRD. Generally speaking, as you guys can see from your documents, we meet all of the requirements for the PRD from a zoning perspective. And, so I'll be here to answer any questions you may have in the future. But, you know, it's a pretty straightforward plan. We have 650 linear feet of street. We do need the required buffer zone. And one of the most important parts, I think, to me, is that we have one existing neighbor, and I'm going to step away from the microphone. But if you look at this other side of the plan, where we show our clearing plan and landscaping plan, we have one existing neighbor here on this side. We're proposing to keep all the existing vegetation here and then meet all the requirements for the buffer zone plantings on the other side. So this is our one existing neighbor that is closest to our project. So we look to minimize impact to any neighboring people. And, you know, the one requirement or the one waiver we are requesting is in the PRD zoning, in the ordinance, is they require multiple types of houses. So we're requesting modification from that. We're proposing all single-family dwellings. We have 650 linear feet of street. We feel that we meet, we want to, what's the correct word? We want to fit in with the existing community. So 650 linear feet of street, it doesn't lend itself to multiple types of housings, meaning, single families, townhouses, things like that. That would be reserved for a larger community. We have 20 single-family houses, and that's the modification we're requesting.
Thank you, Mr. Hutchinson. Will your engineer be also providing a presentation? And the reason I say that is, keep in mind, this is the first time this board has seen this. You know, I want to make sure we identify everything, because there's nothing in front of this board right now. They have been provided a copy of the application and exhibits. But, you know, since we're creating a record here, I just need to know, you know, what documents, plans you want to be part of the record? And if you wanted to spell out, you know, with a little more detail, how you meet the zoning requirements, the PRD regulations?
Certainly, yes, certainly. So, for a PRD, it's required that we have a 10-acre minimum. We have 10.7 acres. The maximum density allowed in a PRD is 2.9 acres per, or 2.9 dwelling units per acre. We're proposing 1.8. Minimum lot area, there is no requirement, so we meet that. Minimum building width, the building line is 62 feet, which we conform to. Proposed front yard setback is 25 feet, which matches the ordinance. Proposed side yard setback is 10 feet, which we meet the ordinance. And proposed open space is 30% of the project. We're proposing 32.3%. And then we also conform to the max, maximum building width.
Thank you, Mr. Hutchinson. Any questions from the board at this point? You can certainly ask questions later if you'd like.
Are these custom boat homes for like a Ryan type boat? I'm sorry.
We have determined that they're an end-use filter. My best guess would be that it would be a Ryan Homes, a D.R. Horton, yeah, something like that.
What kind of wood is for the tree?
These houses, with a 62-foot width, they're usually 40 feet deep, 50, or 40-foot wide, 50 feet deep. So, top two floors, 2,000-plus square foot, probably 2,000 to 3,000 square feet, full basement houses.
Mr. Shook, during your testimony, I'd be delighted to ask if you, if the planning commission had made a recommendation on this particular application? And if so, can we have a copy of that? If you could relate to the board what that recommendation was, and if we can get a copy of that as an exhibit?
Yes, the planning commission did make a recommendation, and the motion by the, the recommendations, rather, by the planning commission was to recommend approval of this plan, and to also recommend approval of the modification request. And that vote passed unanimously, five to zero. And I can provide a copy of that to the record.
Thank you, Mr. Shook. We'll make that the time to exhibit two. So, Mr. Hutchinson, aside from your application and plan set, and your, I believe you made the modification letter from the date of August 25th, 2025. So we made the application, applicants exhibit A, we made the plan set, applicants exhibit B, we're going to make your modification letter, applicants exhibit C. Are there any other documents that we let submit as part of your application? Or, I'm sorry, as part of your presentation?
No.
Okay. Is there any other testimony that you'd like to provide?
No.
Okay. So you're closing your portion of the case?
Yes.
What was the price point on each homes?
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
What is the price point? What is the price point on the homes, each home? Are you going to try to start with that square footage from six?
I don't know. I would say that we'd be 450-plus. You know, part of it will be determined by what our construction costs are and how much it costs to actually develop and then sell the lots for. But I would say 450, 500-plus.
Thank you, Mr. Hutchinson. All right, are there any members of the public who would like to testify in support of this application? Okay. Are there any members of the public who would like to testify in opposition to this application? If so, please come on up, state your name and address, and provide your testimony.
My comment, Victoria Austin, Henlock Street. My comment isn't really truly support or objection. I don't object to this planned community. It is very close to where I live. However, I would like to submit my comments to the record. A home is the largest investment most families undertake in their lifetime. From what we just heard, half a million dollars or more could be the cost of these homes. Parents may invest in a home in Kaufman Commons only to find later that their dream home, where they hope to provide their family and children with safety and security, lies within the evacuation zones of not just one, but two unconventional fracking wells, the Taike on Berford Road and the Leto on Oak Road. This news could prove devastating to a new homeowner. It is unfortunate that this is a case of "let the buyer beware." For that reason, I wish to make public record of these homes being located in two gas well evacuation zones. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Austin. Anyone else?
Scott Wolozek, W-O-L-O-S-Z-Y-K. 16 Schuster Road. Leaving Curtisville on Kaufman Road, heading towards Berford Road, once passing my property. Most homes are on four-to-five-acre minimum lots. Even going down Anandel Road, most lots are one and one-and-a-half acres. The lot size proposed does not fit into the area. There is a lot of undeveloped property in that section of Berford Road. If you allow this PRD, the next application may be 100, 150 homes. When drilling on the Taike well starts, there will be a lot of traffic. But when completed, it will be selling, and the site will be almost the same, except for a couple of tanks that will be left. On the other hand, we will be having 20 homes in the development forever. And each house will have a minimum of two vehicles making at least two trips per day. And that's a lot more traffic on Kaufman Road. We do not want Berford Road to be the next Cedar Ridge Road. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Austin. Anyone else?
My name's Tom Rudolph, RUDOPH. I live at 57 Kaufman Road, with an eyesight of the proposed development. I concur with what Scott just said. The slot size is certainly not conducive or not, as the builder said, it blends in with the neighborhood. That's not the case. The lot that I'm on is a five-acre lot. That was one of eight five-acre lots, was split off many years ago. On the other side of the road, from where I live, there's one person that owns 10 acres, plus another five, and behind him, there's another 10 acres. So potentially, there's 25, 30 sub acres that could be developed. I think we're, and then further down the road, five houses past where I live, is a place that could look of property, which is another 50 acres. And I think we're setting a very difficult or dangerous precedent if we allow lot sizes of this size. Apparently, a lot size of one acre is, would be acceptable. I've spoken with my neighbors on this issue, and they pretty much concur with what I have to say. I'm sorry. Secondly, my side of the road is, from what I understand, from looking at the township maps, is zone R2. The other side is zone R1. I really don't understand the difference between the R1 and the R2 zoning. But I think if development on this area is going to take place, the spread of a half-acre, half-acre or less per house is certainly not keeping within the existing neighborhood. Lastly, I've heard nothing about the width of the roadways. Many of you, I don't know if any of you have the opportunity to drive it up to Grandview, the Grandview plan in Brooklyn Township. And I don't know what the width of those roads are, but we have mailboxes on every side of the road, on both sides of the road, 50 feet apart. And a landscaper with his truck and trailer there on both sides, it's impossible for two vehicles to pass through. Through a school by saying it's even worse. So I don't know what the lot sizes or what the road sizes are of this place. I've heard anything like that, but I think that's a major question you should be interested in. And I guess that's pretty much it for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rudolph. Is there anyone else who would like to provide testimony this evening? Mr. Hutchinson, would you, do you have any additional response or testimony you'd like to provide?
No, not specifically, I mean, to the road width comment. I mean, we're going to meet the township ordinance. Typically, all communities now have a cluster mailbox. So there won't be 20 mailboxes. There'll be a standalone mailbox for the post office. That's pretty much it.
Do you want to address what the road width is?
I think it's 26. 26 feet, whatever complies with the ordinance.
Thank you.
Okay, before we close the hearing, are there any additional questions from the board, comments? Mr. Winging?
I sent a letter asking if there was going to be a hydrant on the road. Do you have that in your plan? I was looking back through the correspondence, and I don't see that hydrant was addressed.
Yes.
My name's Robert Dee, Dee Dee I N I N G. The hydrant's located right here.
And when you say right here, just because that's not going to show on the record. Is there a lot?
I believe it's Lot 118 area.
Okay, so we're going to provide, I think we have all the testimony evidence. Everybody has had a chance to speak and provide their documentation. The order is 60 As. I'm not exactly sure whether the November meeting lines up. So, Mr. Hutchinson, can we ask for, to the extent we do an extension, to issue a decision on the third Wednesday in?
Be 19 or 18.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Hutchinson. And I did want to give an opportunity, if there's both for the applicant and objectors, if you would like to provide a proposed decision in support of your position, whether you're for or against. We'd like those within 21 days. That way, I can review them with the board and executive session prior to the October meeting. It's not a requirement, but you're welcome to do that again on the other side of the, yes, Mr. Rudolph?
Yeah, I'd like to make one more call. I heard this evening about the announcements that were posted along the road. If you're talking about those placards that are laying on the road, if that's the public announcement, I go past there two or three times a day, and I have never seen anything there about this until I read it from the website. So there's been, as far as I'm concerned, there's been no public approval. I went around to my neighbors, half of them didn't even know what was going on.
Well, there is a requirement that the outsides of the property be posted with a, if there's no particular size, they have to be explicitly posted, and there's two ads that run in the newspaper. So those were run. I'm sorry that you didn't get a chance to see those, but I'm glad you were able to get your time.
Well, if they were posted, they're now blown down.
That does happen.
And they're not there. So I think, I heard this solicitor say early on about, oh, all this stuff has been done in agreement with Rosel. I'm sorry, that's not the case. That hasn't happened.
Thank you, sir. Okay, we're going to go ahead and then close the public hearing, and we'll be starting the next public hearing very shortly. Thank you. Thank you. Number 1361, B is in Boy 186. 1361C is in Cat 177. And 1361C is in Cat 104. Before we turn it over to the applicant, could I ask anyone who may possibly be providing testimony this evening, to please stand and raise your right hand to be sworn in? Even if there's a chance he writes you.
Is that all? Everybody ready? Do you saw me swear by my man and God, the testimony? You're about to give us the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you guide. Or do you affirm? Please say, "I do."
I do.
Thank you.
Mr. Shook, we're going to start with you for some housekeeping items. Can you please identify yourself for the record? And your position with the township. Joseph Shook, Assistant Township Manager. And Mr. Shook, did the township publish the required legal advertisements and take photographs of the postings that are required by the public's mandate?
Yes, we did.
And do I have in front of me proofs of publication and photos of those postings?
Yes, sir.
All right, we're going to go ahead and mark that as township exhibit one. While I have you, same question that I asked in the prior hearing. Did the planning commission make a recommendation on this conditional use application?
No, they did not.
Okay. Is there a document that expresses that lack of recommendation?
Yes, there's a letter which I can send to submit.
All right, we're going to make that township exhibit two. And I think pretty much everybody who's here for the first hearing, but just very briefly, we're going to give the applicant and the applicant's exhibits, exercise of the applicant's witnesses, opportunity to present their plan and application to show that it complies with the township's zoning ordinance. After the applicant, anyone who wants to testify in support of the application will have an opportunity to speak. After that, we will turn it over to any members of the public who wish to speak in opposition to this application. Just keep in mind, we do have a court reporter, so please make sure we don't speak over one another. Be respectful of whoever is speaking. And when you are speaking, please identify yourself and spell your last name for the court reporter before you begin speaking. With that said, we probably missed Peters. Are you going to lead us off, or Mr. Richter?
Mr. Richter? Hi, good evening. My name is Stephen Victor from Victor Wessel Associates with Landscap Architects for the credit. Also here with Leslie Peters from Bowles Rice. We're here for a conditional use hearing for townhouses on the property we refer to as the wilds. We have made an application for both preliminary plan and conditional use. They are riding through. But the discussion tonight is solely focused on the conditional use. To answer some of the conditional use requirements, and there are six requirements, and we shall are meeting those, it's important for us to give you at least some background and some information regarding the plan itself. So to the extent that we are referring to the plan as for purposes of meeting the conditions for the conditional use. The plan itself is a development with 137 townhouses. We are using three different townhouse styles. NVR, Ryan Homes, will be the builder. And the three building types, as you see there, are shown on the left side of the drawing. And the three different colors, the fuchsia, blue, and yellow, represent the three different housing types' locations within the overall plan. On the plan you're looking at and subsequent plans, north is to the right. So our entrance comes in off of Star Road, which is the road running east-west, up-down on the right-hand side of the drawing, where we have a singular entrance to the plan. The roadway then winds in and terminates in a series of cul-de-sacs or in a giant loop road at the south-westerly portion of the site, where we have a proposed clubhouse facility. The clubhouse, the red building there, would also support a swimming pool, two bocce courts, a pickleball, and then also a dog park area within the loop area itself. The loop is a one-way roadway system around the community center. The plan is proposed for a sale by condominium. Condominium means that there are no internal lot lines. The buyers, the 137 people who will buy the units, will buy just the architecture of the units themselves and all of the ground upon which the units sit, their driveways, and the shared private street that we have here would all be owned by the condominium association. You're all probably well acquainted with homeowners associations. This is very similar in that it's an organization simply of the 137 owners who would own and maintain all of the area and land components within the development. So there would be no public streets, so there would be no requirement or impact for municipal services for the street system. We are showing sidewalks throughout the plan. On one side of the street, the red-colored line shows the side of the street on which the sidewalks would be located. And the picture on the left shows how that would be positioned right at the back of curb for the sidewalks. It's more just for informational purposes to note that we do have sidewalks connecting all of the units back to the entrance and also to the community center area. A traffic study was prepared, looking at not only our intersection with Star Road, but also with an off-site intersection as picked by the township's traffic engineer. And this is the results of that. It talks, this table shows the LOS, stands for Level of Service. Traffic engineers use levels A, B, C, D, and F, and depending upon the time delays associated with it. All of our studied intersections pre-development are Level Service A. And following the development of the 137 townhouses, will remain at Level Service A. So the traffic engineering report shows that there is no degradation to Star Road or the intersections in that area with the increased traffic. Buffer yards and landscaping are one of the criteria for the conditional use. And so we wanted to show you the landscaping plan. The broad areas of dark green are existing vegetation to remain. There are areas around our perimeter that will need to be made up to buffer yard A standard. And the diagram on the right shows a double row of evergreen trees, both in plan and perspective of what would take place within any area in which there is a lack of trees today, and so to be putting back in. All totaled, and the chart on the right, it points out that we are planting 106 buffer yard A trees. In addition to that, we're planting 137, we'll call street trees, to be planted with each unit itself. Another question in the conditional use had to do with lighting. What you're looking at here is a photometrics of the lighting. Each unit will have its own post lamp. You see the picture in the lower right-hand corner there. It's a six-foot tall. Obviously, it does not put out very much light, which is the intention here. On the bottom left, those two circles identify the photometrics. The area of the fuchsia color represents where you would have one, I think it's one-foot candle or more. The orange is zero to one-foot candle. And so what we have there is that the areas of those circles, when applied to each one of the units, would be the limits of the lighting impact. So you can see, all the lighting is really contained within the street scape itself. And there is zero light pollution going out to the abiding properties. Now, it did be too reminiscent of this, but if I go back many, many ways, back when I was in basic training, one of the things they did, they took us out, and they sat us in the bleachers, and somebody was standing there a mile away, and they lit a cigarette. This was long enough ago that people smoked. And the example that the army was teaching me was that you can see light a long distance away. So will people be able to see our light? Possibly. If they're not, if they are standing and our buildings are not in the way, people will see light. But the light from that lighter, that light, lit that cigarette, had zero foot candles for me a half-mile away. The same thing has happened here. Foot candle wise, if you meet your code requirements, it will be zero. In the army, that was semi-important, because you go to light your cigarette, some sniper will shoot you. We don't have that today, so as far as lighting. The next few slides deal with the conditional use requirements that are found in Section 210, that's the zoning ordinance, 162, period, A, period, subsection 51. These are the six standards for having townhouses in the R2 zoning district. The left column gives the code requirement, and the right column gives our response. Number A, buffer yards between a townhouse development and adjacent residential lots shall be increased by 10 feet in width. It further goes on within the ordinance itself to say as the physical via buffer yard A. What the ordinance fails to do is tell a standard for the width of a buffer yard A. But we just assumed buffer yard A was five feet. We've added it. So on our diagram, we have identified the buffer yard as 15 feet wide. Number B, screening between a townhouse development and adjacent residential lots or designated residential zoning district shall be required as per Section 210 dash 153A. And that deals with buffer yard A in that section, 153A. Our response is, a landscaping plan, which I have showed you this evening, shows we are proposing the required 106 buffer trees. In addition, another 133 street trees are proposed. Number C, the primary vehicle access to the townhome development shall, at a minimum, have direct access to a collector's tree. Our response is, accesses to Star Road, and the township has classified it a collector road. And it would point out that our level of services will remain at LOSA. road, and it would point out that our level of services will remain at LOSA. Number D, the maximum height of outdoor lighting for both parking areas and roadway lights, roadways shall be 20 feet in residential districts and 25 feet in non-residential districts. Our proposed lighting is a six-foot front yard post-lamp. Number E, plan owner and/or development shall provide a plan of photometrics of the lot. I have presented to you this evening, and it was part of our submitted package, the photometrics plan. Number F, illumination, when measured at a lot line, shall be a maximum of zero foot candle. Again, the photometrics plan shows that we have zero foot candles at the property line.
I'm sorry, I can speak in my crosstalk. Leslie Peters. We would ask that Mr. Victor's submission be made part of the record or an exhibit to the record, please.
And so we, I think we currently have an application, a conditional use application. We have this, an associated plans that have been submitted, so we'll make that applicant's one, if that's all right?
Yes, thank you.
Collectively, and then we'll make this, our presentation is applicant's exhibit two.
Thank you. So to conclude, as Steve's PowerPoint presentation indicates, the applicant has met the specific objective criteria of the ordinance for the conditional use, so that any objector to the request then bears the burden, both of persuasion and evidence, to come forward and show a high degree of probability that the proposed use violates other general requirements of the zoning ordinance, meaning that the use would be injurious to the public health, safety, and welfare. This evidence cannot be clear assertions or opinions, potential decline in property value, or aesthetic concerns. We would request the opportunity in response to any objector testimony, if necessary, if that's acceptable. And finally, I did want to clarify two things. These both relate more to the plan itself, the preliminary plan than the conditional use, but we did want to address them this evening. So the zoning ordinance defines density as the number of dwelling units divided by the number of acres in the lot exclusive of any right-of-way, of any public road. Right-of-way is further defined in the ordinance as a street alley or other public purpose dedicated for public use. Our development does not contemplate public roads, therefore the roadways are excluded from the lot acreage in our calculation of density. And second, we believe the ordinance, well, I'm sorry, the ordinance does define dwelling units and land development to include condominiums. The Pennsylvania courts have made clear that the development in a condominium form of ownership does not require, or, I'm sorry, require the creation of additional lots. A condominium is a form of ownership not for property use, subject to zoning regulation. The creation of condominium units does not create separate parcels for zoning purposes. That is our initial presentation, again, subject to our ability to respond to any comments if necessary.
Thank you, Ms. Peters.
Thank you.
And is there anyone who would like to speak in support of this application? All right, before we move to those folks who might be objecting to the application, I do want to try to, attempt to explain a bit of the, to try to clarify what we're here for tonight and sort of the decisions that the board's going to be making. So as Mr. Victor and Ms. Peters correctly stated, what we're here for tonight is a hearing on the conditional use application. So the conditional use application is essentially a zoning approval. So there's for, when you do a project like this, you have both a zoning component, a zoning approval, and then your land development component to it. So the hearing that we're here for tonight is, the applicant had the burden to show that they complied with those six items in order to obtain zoning approval. In addition, they also have to comply with the general standards and criteria in the zoning ordinance. Regardless of what the board does with this particular zoning application, the board has a second decision to make before the project would be essentially approved, and that is to review the plans in accordance with the subdivision, land development ordinance and the zoning ordinance from a, from a land development perspective. So it's a little bit difficult to kind of explain that distinction, but that, you know, the use is essentially the way to construct the project as presented. However, it still needs to comply with the subdivision, land development requirements in the township's code. So one outcome could be that the township, the board could find that the conditional use application is approved, but it could find that there may be some component of the plan that doesn't meet the land development requirements, or it could find that it doesn't meet either one, or it could find that, you know, they comply with both. But I just want to try to explain that bit of nuance, because the first hearing tonight was a planned residential development, which is a bit of a different animal. It's essentially sort of a combination of zoning and land development handled all at once. But the, this particular plan, because of the way the code is set up, is this conditional use component for zoning approval. There's a concurrent application for land development approval, as Mr. Victor testified to, that will also be active on, by the board at a future date. So with that said, hopefully I didn't make things worse. If you go ahead, if anyone would like to testify in opposition, please step up to the microphone, state your name and address, and explain, you know, what your position
My name is Candy Lovich, L-O-V-I-C-H, under 143 Pasquers Lane.
Sorry, your first name?
C-A-N-D-Y, or you want my full name, Candace, C-A-N-D-Y-C-H.
Candace?
Candace, that's my full name, but they call me Candy, okay?
And where do you live?
Forty-three Pasquers Lane, B-A-S-K-O-R-Z, Lane.
Well, God, my fingers are on fire.
Sorry about that.
That was your last name, I didn't catch your last name.
L-O-V-I-C-H. Okay, I didn't get a chance to get to the last meeting, it was August, which was Labor Day weekend. I come back, and the plans that we went to the first meeting, this all changed. This is a totally different plan now. I do have concerns about safety concerns. I still don't think that there's going to be for school buses, for fire engines, for ambulances, if there's ever a fire. There is no way ambulances and fire trucks are going to be together. Another thing, I'm right by, now I notice by a park, a swimming hole, and everything. He said about buffers, will I see lighting, will I see, have noise? I'm right here, and it's going to be right there. There's no other trees, we're all open. I'm really concerned about the noise. I've been here for 50 years, longer than that though, but where I live, I'm a West Deeran country girl, okay? I didn't ask to live in a city, and I really, I meant, for me to even want to sell my house, I can't. I'm going to start crying, I'm sorry. I mean, over the years, we spent millions of taking care of our house, you know, and I still want to be in my backyard to watch the stars, to, you know, I mean, we have a lot of other spaces, and actually, all this is not going to accommodate. It's too tight, and I, the architects is fine, I mean, you can do great jobs on paper, but when you go to do stuff, it's not going to fit. I mean, I don't mean to be rude, I'm not being rude to any architects, I mean, but that's not going to fit in the area that it is. Plus, we also have a roadway that's supposed to be for emergency. Now they said it's going to be 100, it's going to be looped down, there's the way a fire truck's going to go through down. And how I know, because I, my son, friends of mine are all farmers, they were talking about Star Road. That Star Road is terrible. We had a beautiful, the mushroom market, they have a beautiful place. We went over, we seen the guy sitting there, a beautiful place. We introduced ourselves, you know, we live on Pasquers Lane, blah, 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 welcome to the community. Well, he says, I can't believe, I was sitting on my, on the porch, on how fast everybody goes on that road. Now you're going to have an entrance down below where you can see coming up that hill. And Mr. Baker, that lives right there, he already got hit, how many times? My dad got hit on that road, because people come fast, and all of a sudden they can't stop, and they're trying to turn. I mean, it's very bad. Where they're going to put the entrances is bad. You can't see. But my concern now is the safety, there's not enough room to do all that. And what kind of trees and buffers are you going to do? Am I going to hear noise? Am I going to hear latsy lighting? These townhouses, are they going to have back porch lights that are going to shine right on my porch in my bedroom? When they start, they have to level the ground. My poor sister-in-law, right now, if they level it, she's going to have a six-foot drop from her property. The drainage, when it rains, I know they're going to have drains in there, but is it going to hold it all? That, that still, it's just a swamp when it rains, there's no drainage there. But we have to consider, there are houses back there. I don't want to leave my community, and I won't, but I will say, please, there's other places to do this. And like I said, I'm right, right there, my poor sister-in-law's right there, my other ends, I mean, we're all a community. I'm going to have people coming in that we don't even know. I've already dealt with my grandkids, one to their games. You have people at these plants, some of them are very rude. I mean, you know, he's like, where'd you come from? You ain't know West Deeran. You know, it's like, whoa! But those are my concerns, with lighting, buffering, am I going to hear that pickleball boom, boom, boom all day long?
Ms. Lovich, before you wrap up your testimony, can you explain exactly where you live compared to this location?
Well, I don't, I don't, I'm left, huh? Which way do I go?
You will go by this amount.
Okay, I'm right here.
So just for the record, so you're-
This is here, I guess these are townhouses, and I'm right here.
So your property, that's the proper letter for it?
Yeah, that's it, huh?
Thank you. All right, thank you, Ms. Lovich. Is there anyone else who would like to provide testimony this evening?
Victoria Austin, Hemlock Street. I have a question maybe they can answer. We heard about the streetlights along the street in front of each home, but what kind of outdoor lighting is going to be at the community center? I assume those won't be the six-foot pole lights, so will those be taller lights? How bright will those lights be? And as Ms. Lovich said, her property will be very close to the community center. If there are taller lights there, it may impact her and anyone else living down along the end of Pasquers Lane. So I wanted to know about the lighting at the community center. Also, the roads being excluded from the computations because they're not public roads. Although they may not be publicly maintained by West Deer, this is not a gated community, so these roads are open to public access and travel. So I think they actually should be included in any computations. And I also wanted to mention the additional traffic at the intersection as you go down to the very base of Star Road, where it meets Little Deer Creek Road. That's a hazardous and kind of confusing intersection, and adding additional vehicles in this area, especially with this kind of density, will definitely lead to some problems. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Austin. We will give an applicant opportunity to respond, but we're going to get through the objectors comments first. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in opposition?
My name is Paul Pisht, P-I-S-H, on 134 Star Road. You see where this is, I have a right-of-way, and there's, I'm a standwich. The main entrance to the plan, the main entrance to the main plan, is my property line, and then there's the right-of-way. So I'm kind of a standwich.
Are you between, I'm having a hard time.
Oh, you're on Star Road?
134 Star Road, right there.
Okay, I got that.
So for the record, you're-
Top right-hand corner.
Top right-hand corner between the two lines below the, what some have referred to as emergency access area.
Right.
That's the position specifically.
Right. I talked to Mr. Steve, and he kind enough to like me, and I feel somewhat at peace. And, you know, it was 70 home, planned last year, I was concerned about 144 cars, two cars per hour, like, on Star Road. I lived there for 61 years. I've seen vast movie car up, up the hill and down the hill, like 50, 60 miles an hour. So now you have 137 townhouses, that would be 274 cars going in and out of Star Road, which is a rural part of the suburban area, it's not, it's not massive scale we're looking at. And I'm also, you've got to think about FedEx, Amazon, UPS, school buses, and I think this entrance would be worse than middle road than I can, in a sense, though the term is difficult, I, I'm also concerned about my property value. I appreciate Mr. Steve mentioned about uppery trees, landscaping, and there's no gate on Star Road on the right-of-way, but there will be gate at the end of that right-of-way. But I'm not going to stop. Some people there who mentioned that, you're not entering. Well, how many people do comply? I'm not sure. But I agree with Ms. Candy, she and I agree as we're in high school. I understand, I mean, anyways, we'll just say 40 plus. Anyways, I understand where she's coming from, she's sentimental, and this is two restored buildings, very different than anywhere near us, on Star Road, on Pasquers Lane, the closest one to be required, dear man, but those are senior citizens. They, and everybody have two cars in her apartment, you know, so it's really change. I am, I believe in progress, I do that. I really believe in progress, and I believe people should have a beautiful home, beautiful townhouse, nice amenity, but I'm very concerned by my property value, and I'm out of traffic. 274 cars per day, in and out. You're asking for a problem, I'm thinking, because I've been living there 61 years. I've seen vast car going up and down. Now you've got, I'm moist candy, I'll have that problem. But I'm not at the start, but I understand anybody else, so thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Peters. So over the next, we're trying desperately to get up here, but.
Sorry, Steve. Brandon Pasquers, P-A-S-K-O-R-Z, I've got a few concerns about the lots going in. One would be for Josh there with that emergency access they got going in. It's about a 300-foot span with a 12% grade, where it meets, I kind of, it might be hard for one of our trucks to get up and down there. And then on that emergency access road, they plan on putting culverts in, which wasn't mentioned today, which is going to do that storm drain water down to a natural wetland, which I'm not seeing on the map today. It was listed in the prior map, which is why the road does that horseshit to get into the housing plan. And in that wetland, I do believe there is milkweed growing, which is the only thing that a lawn butterfly can survive on. And then his buffer zones, buffer A zone, which would be on the north side, the northwest side of the map, mainly along Pasquers Lane, numbers three, four, and five. Mainly number three, which is on the main roadway, then East and West, which would be in front of my mother's house, would be 31 Pasquers Lane. It's a 320 linear foot span with only 16 arborvitae, with 15-foot offcenters going in there, versus it buffer zone five, which is a 50-foot span with only 36 trees going in there and a 15-foot off-center, which I feel is strange with the much bigger linear feet with much- Which I feel is strange with the much bigger linear feet with much less trees getting into it for that buffer zone. And then last meeting was also mentioned with sidewalks only going on one side of the street with parking on the opposite side of the street. What is it with a handicapped person parking on the opposite side of the street? Is he gonna find his, his or her way down the street to find access to the sidewalk to get to his or her apartment, to friend's apartment? And then the storm drain water, number three, there's no access once that pond does fill up, which is also on the northwest side of the map. Once it does fill up, it will be going nowhere besides the emergency access road, which has a culvert skirt, which Ryer mentioned last meeting. And I think that's all my concerns this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Passport.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
How you doing? My name is Stephen Russek. I live on 164 Star Road. I'm adjacent to this plan.
I'm sorry, Mr. Russek, could you spell your last name, please?
And I, I have some concerns too, just like some of the other citizens in the township. My first question is, is this R2 or R3? According to the map?
All the data can respond to you.
Okay. I believe that it's R3. Okay, if it's R3, then all these lines are for R2. How am I, I didn't look at the R2 zoning at all, so I'm not sure if these are accurate or not, because I assumed everything was R3 for our discussions tonight. Then when we talk about the planning commission and land developments, it says every development shall, should, should provide adequate screening. And I'd like to know, you know, the planning commission, what type are they using? Are they using according to your zone zoning, section 110, 153? Is it A, B, or C, provide all the boundaries or all the vegetation to protect the houses and so forth? So it doesn't have an impact? And secondly, it says in section A, if a determination is made that the existing vegetation is sufficient, an application may be required to record a conservation easement. Is that, it's up to me, because we don't know, the planning commission didn't recommend this to the board yet, so how am I gonna be guaranteed that that is met? Because if it's not met, we have a development that is suing the township. These people are gonna make 100, well, it's in litigation right now. And they're gonna deal with 137 homes that approximately 100 grand a piece are gonna make off this, maybe 100 and a half. That's 13 and a half million dollars. I myself don't have that kind of money to fight the big giant. And I think it's the job of the supervisors to protect my interest as a homeowner that is next to this property, that I don't wanna guarantee to make sure that that thumb pass worth is great, some concerns about the harbor lighting and so forth. And I also have some concerns about the water retention pond, number two, that flows next to my property. And I think that you have a 15-foot easement there. Your access road violates that. But your retention pond right there, it's at the bottom of the hill. Why'd they put it there? Because there's a stream that runs through there. Mr. Pish lived there his whole life. They identified wetlands, and I can tell you this, it's wet the whole way through. The reason why they curved that road is to bypass the wetlands, but that goes all the way down through my property, the creek, and it goes into, the creek gets located along Little Deer Creek Road. And the pond is there on my property. That's been there, they used to feed their farm animals. And like you said, there's milkweed there, there's ducks that go there. And I, I believe that that whole property is wetland, and I don't believe that the study that they did is accurate to do that. What else do I have here? At the top, House 110, it appears that the setback doesn't really meet the requirement. And as a homeowner, I feel that this development is not going to fit in with the type of lots that are there. You're asking for 137 homes where there's nothing even close to that in West Deer with this type of size lot. So I don't think that's conducive. And I kinda think we all know too, and I'm gonna go on the record and say this, their plan, their original plan for 44 homes was shot down, so they came up with this one plan of 137, to try to force your man to approve the one for 44 lots, because we know this isn't gonna work. And this is just basically a slap in the face to all the residents that are here. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Passport.
Roth Stumpf, Millwray. So just wanted to-
Mr. Stumpf, could you spell your last name for the court board, please?
S.T.U.N.P. So just wanted to state some observations, because this, this development's definitely went through like the whole process multiple times. If I remember correctly, where like the top loop is, where like the clubhouse or whatever that part of the development is, that started out as lot 141, and there was concerns about it being a double frontage lot, and whether or not that existed, like that was a real thing or not. And then there was concerns about, roughly speaking, if I remember, I thought it was like five to nine feet and 10 feet of like open area and what was gonna be used and if the common, you know, if it was common area or something like that, that other property owners could come on to it. And it really felt like the township really dug in pretty hard on that one. And there was concerns about getting emergency vehicles like fire department around that loop to make sure that the radius was proper. And then the, the entrance off of Star Road, then dropping down, straight down to the bottom, whether or not that would be defined as a cul-de-sac. So my concern was is that if we were, well, seems, looking back on it, it seems silly that we were concerned about the double frontage in the sense that if a property owner were to be a prospective buyer of that property, they would know like what they're walking into, like it's not like they're gonna miss that. So if they were okay with it, I mean, to me, like I would think that that should've had a variance applied to it or something. But I guess maybe more importantly was the concept of like emergency response. So if we were concerned about that, now we have a plan in front of us where the concentration of homes and now the vehicles in and out of all that is significantly more than what it was originally. And I would think in theory that now this plan has the potential to be one of the catalysts that will ultimately lead to a school tax increase, because I would think that there's gonna be more potential for higher student counts coming out of the development. Not necessarily that you could make a determination based on that, but we are what we are. But in reference to, as far as if there were to be a fire or some sort of an emergency, it looks like there's, I mean, obviously, there's only one way in and out officially other than the unofficial emergency, dark road access or something. I mean, what, what happens, like if you have, you know, some kind of an emergency at 7:30 in the morning and the whole plan is stopped? Like, now we've got way more people stuck in the development. I don't know, I just don't see it. Like I think, I, I just don't, I don't think we're looking to approve a better development than it was in front of us previously.
Thank you, Mr. Stumpf. Anyone else before we give the testimony?
I wasn't registered. I'd like to make a comment.
And were you sworn in?
No, I wasn't.
Okay. Yeah, well, we get just one, is your ready?
Do you solemnly swear by Almighty God, the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help be God? Or do you affirm? Please say I do. Thank you.
I think you can pull that down. My name is Andrea Passports, and I live at 44 Passports Lane. That's P.A.S.K.O.R.Z. I just want to make a comment after listening to all these people. The last meeting, my concern was the safety issue also. What I want to reiterate is, they're talking about this potential emergency road. Well, I know for a fact, that's not going to work. My husband had a stroke, and we needed to get him to the hospital ASAP. Now, our road was being, our private road was being worked on. The only way we got him out of my home was through the neighbor's yard and up through the emergency. But they couldn't bring an ambulance down there. They had to go get him in a quad. Four gentlemen had to get him in a quad, take him in the quad, and go up that road. So I know for a fact that's not gonna work, even if they paint it, it's not big enough. So that was my one concern. The other concern or observation, I mean, I know they have a lot of facilities here, but I didn't hear them saying anything about a playground or someplace for kids to play. So they'd have to play in the common area. Yeah, you have a swimming pool and pickleball. What if you have a three-year-old? They don't have to play pickleball. So I'm just concerned about that. But the biggest concern is the traffic on Star Road getting in and out. We're on a private road, and even us coming out on the Star Road is somewhat difficult. So increasing the number of cars is astronomical and, and I think so dangerous. But that emergency exit, I don't see working at all. That's all.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Passport. Anyone else? We will give the applicant an opportunity to respond before we close up the air.
Stephen Victor.
Can you pull the microphone up?
I'll, I'll respond to those that I've marked if there are other items that I did not cover. You'll read when I'm finished to ask me to make comments on. Regarding the lighting, as it comes from the townhouse windows, it's very difficult with which to assess what that's going to be. But again, they're far enough away from the property line. They would have a very hard time getting anywhere close to any foot candles at the property lines themselves. Question of lighting at the community center. The applicant's built this community center other locations, and all of the lighting they use are lights that are attached to the building themselves, like you would see at your front door. So they're not just spotlights, they're just casual lighting. These are not intended to be areas of activity, you know, other than going into the building, but late at night, the swimming pool's not open, the other play equipment's not open. The comment was made about studying the intersection of Wild, or excuse me, Star and the main road to our east. And in the chart that I put on for the record, that was a requested intersection studied, and it shows that our impact there would also be level service and pay. One gentleman talked about the impact to the wetlands. There was a wetland delineation prepared by our biologist identifies the wetlands. That report has been made available to the township. They have not questioned it as to the location of our wetlands. So that same report will be used by the DDP, so it will come under review by the DDP. Question had to do with the number of trees in the various zone areas, the upper yard areas, and that was based upon where we found the openings. It wasn't necessarily the length. So there would be a double row of evergreens wherever there is an opening. And I think we properly addressed that, but if additional trees are necessary to complete that, then they will be put in. Same gentleman questioned the outfall from storm water detention, number three. Now, quite honestly, that, several of the other questions have nothing to do with the conditional use. But all of that information was shown on the preliminary plans that you are reviewing, has been reviewed by Schub Engineering. And he spoke incorrectly to say where that was being discharged. It is not being discharged upstream from the emergency road, but it is being piped around that area and discharged downstream because of concerns that the pipe underneath the detention facility, under the emergency road, may be improperly sized. The gentleman questioned the R2 zoning. Wasn't able to look at my computer, but all of our applications have said R2, and Schub has not said that we were incorrect on that. As to our buffer yard, it's the code requirement that says we must use a buffer yard A. Regarding the conservation easement, we have no objection to that during the land development process. If that was to be made a condition of it, we'd be happy to place the conservation easement over the existing wood line to remain. Oh, the question, or a comment was made about this doesn't fit in the neighborhood. That was not our decision. It's your zoning ordinance that said townhouses aren't allowed to use in the R2 district if they comply with these conditional uses. And hopefully, we have proven that to you this evening. And lastly, I'm sorry for the lady's emergency that she had, and they had to use a quad to get her out, but, or get her husband out. But if we're using this for emergency purposes, the roadway will be improved so that all sorts of emergency vehicles can utilize that. Again, that's really more of a land development issue than it is a conditional use issue. Does anyone have any questions from the board itself?
I did wanna, before I open up to the board, either Mr. Schub or Mr. Shug, can we get some clarification on the zoning district? Because I'm looking at a review letter that references R3.
That is correct. This is R3. My mistake.
No, no problem. I just wanted to make sure.
I was thinking, my PowerPoint, I wrote R2, but you had R3.
That's okay. I just wanted to be clear for the record.
Yes.
Okay. And before we close up, is there, are there any questions from the board?
So of the radius of the block, you have a one-lane circle going around there?
Yes.
Is that because you don't have enough room for a full-size cul-de-sac?
What we wanted to do was avoid any confusion as to the traffic flow going around it. And we felt keeping it as a one-way system, normally when you enter in, we're not in England, we're, we're Cozy Outras away, you come in, you stay at the right, and you go around in that fashion. That was the reason. If the township came back and said to us it needs to be a two-way traffic movement, it can. But we personally believe that as a one-way flow system, it would be preferable and safer.
So I'm not so much concerned about the radius at the bottom of the circle, looking in your mouth there, but the bottleneck at the top. If that lane is only one lane wide, 16 feet, our largest truck is 45 feet long and it's a hand and axle.
We can run some, it gives a land development issue, but we can run some turning templates for fire trucks, and we can make sure that it fits. If necessary, there's plenty of room there to install a much larger radius. The radius we have chosen is no different than any other T-intersection that you would come to in the municipality with a 25-foot radius. What you're saying, though, is that you're coming from a full 24-foot wide street now to 16, something you did not consider, and we'd be happy to make sure that that works.
And then whenever you put your landscape layer or overlay on top of that, you have trees right there in that circle, which would hinder us even further. Okay. The circle at the top, is that one lane wide or two lanes?
Circle at the top.
Or the, around the community center or whatever it is?
That's 16 feet wide?
That's also 16.
That's one-way? Yes. I thought that's the one you were talking about. You're talking about the one on the easterly side? Is that where you were?
I was referencing the bottom one. Now I'm talking about the one at the top. Is that wider than 16 feet?
Let me, let me state, let me go back and answer your question, the first question. That is your township-specified intersection or cul-de-sac design comes from your code for streets of this length. So if you have reason to go against your own code, these need to be bigger or wider, we're happy to do so. I know what you're talking about at the bottom tip of that. We did run a turning template on it, and we widened it specifically to accommodate that. So we, we believe your fire trucks can go around that section of that townhouse. Or that cul-de-sac, sorry.
The only issue with that is those trees at the very bottom. The ladder truck sticks three feet up in front of the truck.
We get, we'll make sure that there is no plantings within those areas to accommodate that.
And then even last time, my concern about that emergency entrance at the top, is that for emergency vehicles? Or is that for the residents to get out in case the road's blocked?
It would be for any purpose of getting an exit or access if the main road was blocked. Yes. It would be gated until such time as an emergency and then could be opened.
So you would build that the same construction as the roads inside the plan?
No. It was anticipated that it would be a, what I'll refer to as a hard gravel roadway. If it is deemed that it needs to be asphalt, we're happy to asphalt. No one has brought that question or challenged that this time.
Yeah, our heavyest truck is 66,000 pounds. I'm not too keen on gravel. And I know that that pipe isn't very long to provide a wide car path through there. So I would be leery as to even call that an emergency entrance or outlet for the fire department's use. Just one other question. What would be the distance between the buildings at its closest point?
20 feet.
20 feet from the wall?
That's the code requirement. Yes, sir.
And then do you, do you happen to know what the distance is between the blue building at the top and Mrs. Lovich's house, which is right at the red line?
I can only speculate by looking at it here. It's approximately 50 feet from the rear of the house to the property line.
To the property line.
Maybe even a little bit more than that because that, that blue unit is 50 foot deep. So it looks like it's a little bit more than the depth of that unit.
All right. Anything else from the board? I know Ms. Peters has already given us an extension letter authorizing the board to issue its decision of this particular conditional use application and also the land development application that's pending at the November 19 meeting as well. So thank you for that, Ms. Peters. I invite any of the parties within 21 days of tonight's hearing. I know that you wanted to transfer it yet, but you want to have the opportunity to discuss any proposed findings with the board in executive session next month. So if you get those, all submissions have to be within 21 days to the township manager. Mr. Mayor, what's your email address?
It's D-MayorD-M-A-T-O-R@westdeertownship.com.
All right. And that's also available on the township website. So we'll accept those for up to 21 days for tonight. And that decision will be issued at the November board meeting. So thanks, everybody. We'll close up shop and take a very brief recess. And I think we'll start very good evening.